Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the council meeting of Wyndham City Council. This Tuesday, the twenty seventh of July, two thousand and twenty one. This council meeting is being undertaken in line with the COVID nineteen Omnibus Emergency Measures Act two thousand and twenty, which provides for council to meet and is deemed to be open to the public if the meeting is streamed live on the internet. In the spirit of reconciliation, before we begin this meeting, I acknowledge the peoples of the Coolan Nation as their traditional owners of the land on which Wyndham is being built. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. I'll now read out the opening prayer and welcome. We pray for the guidance in the council's decision making to achieve the best outcome for the people of Wyndham. Councillors, I welcome you all this evening and staff in attendance as well. Madam Acting CEO this evening, as we are broadcasting via the internet, I'm just going to do a roll call of councillors. So councillor Heather Marcus, are you with us this evening? Councillor Heather Marcus, are you with us this evening? I can see you, but I think you're on mute.
Yes, but I may not be able to stay all night.
Thank you councillor Marcus. Councillor Maynard, are you here?
Present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Shaw, are you here with us this evening? Looks like your screen's frozen, I'll come back to you. Councillor McIntyre?
You're on mute.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm here.
Thank you councillor Hill.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm here.
Councillor Ramesh?
Yes, here, thank you.
Thank you councillor Gilligan.
Yes, thanks.
Councillor Barrera?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Mufford?
Yes, here.
And councillor Zakowski?
I'm here, thank you.
And thank you, and councillor Shaw, you were frozen before, I see you're back.
Yes, I had a network issue, I am here, thank you.
No worries councillors, we'll just take it slow because of any internet issues and so forth tonight. And as a result of all councillors being here, there are no apologies. Accordingly, the next item on our agenda is item three, which is declarations of conflicts of interest. Councillors, are there any conflicts of interest? Councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, sorry, apologies, struggling to take that. I am declaring a general conflict interest for agenda, agenda item seven point two.
Thank you councillor McIntyre, any other councillors with conflicts? Thank you. Item four is confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting and the minutes of the previous meeting of the council are held on the Wednesday, the sixteenth of June, two thousand and twenty one, and Tuesday, the twenty ninth of June, two thousand and twenty one, as prepared and circulated, be confirmed. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Maynard, seconded. Councillor Ramesh. Councillors, I now put the motion to a vote. Councillor Mufford?
Yes, carry that.
You're for that motion?
For, for, yeah.
Thank you councillor Zakowski?
I'm for the motion, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Barrera?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
Oh.
Councillor Ramesh?
For.
Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor McIntyre?
For.
Councillor Shaw?
For.
Councillor Maynard?
I'm for.
And councillor Marcus?
For.
Thank you, I, I, I move for the motion as well, the motion has been carried. Item five, deputations and presentations, there are nil. Item six, there are no reports for item six point one, two, three or item six point four. Item six point five, other reports. Councillors, we now have item six point five point one, naming of new community centre in Tarnit, Riverdale PSP, the report is on pages seven to ten of the, of the agenda with the recommendation on page seven, there are nil attachments. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Ramesh? A seconder? Councillor Marcus, did I see your hand up? Thank you. Councillor Ramesh is the mover, would you like to speak on this item?
Um, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the attention of the council over the last few months has been quivering over the choice of naming. Yes, the names are important and yes, we need to proactively establish a list of community accepted and appropriate names for future council facilities, including names that respect and celebrate the traditional custodians of this land and their unique culture from which we need to learn. Today, however, I'd like to wish, I, I wish to highlight the value that the council is bringing to our Tarnit West residents, best Tarnit residents, sorry, through the commitment to the local community centre itself. Wyndham has one of the most diverse populations with first generation migrants from around the world now calling Wyndham home. Each resident brings with them their own unique and rich culture, history, traditions, religions that must be celebrated and respected if we are to collectively call this our unified Australian culture. I commend the council for their ongoing focus and work in establishing the community, establishing community centres across the city and welcome council setting, settling on the name Daniella Community Centre for the West Tarnit facility. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Ramesh, councillor Marcus as the seconder, would you like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, this was a very good process, it went out to public consultation. Um, there was a little bit of controversy over it, um, but in the end, I'm very happy that we chose the name as that's the name that the public wanted. And so I'm very happy that it will now be called the Daniella Precinct. Um, I think there was a few disappointed because the Chaffey, the Chaffey brothers did not get a look in, but the public made their, their voice known and therefore we accept that they had done a good job. The council of officers have done a good job, so I'm more than happy to be the seconder of the naming of this community centre. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Marcus, councillor Maynard, would you like to speak on this item? I'm sorry councillor Maynard, you're muted.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, no, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you councillor Shaw, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Gilligan, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thanks.
Councillor Barrera?
No, thank you.
Councillor Mufford?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Zakowski?
Ah, no, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor McIntyre?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillors, I'll now go back, I'll now put the motion to a vote, councillor Ramesh?
For.
Councillor Marcus?
For.
Councillor Maynard?
For.
Councillor Shaw?
Against.
Councillor Gilligan?
Against.
Councillor Barrera?
For.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
Councillor Zakowski?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor McIntyre?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill?
For, Madam Mayor.
And I'm for as well, accordingly, the motion has been, has been won and has been carried. We now move on to item six point five, point two, six point five point two, proposed discontinuance and sale of unused road known as R two on PS seven double three, one double nine in Palmer's Road, Trugerniner. The report is on pages eleven to fifteen, recommendation, recommendation is on page twelve and there are nil attachments. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Ramesh, uh, seconded by councillor Shaw, councillor Ramesh, do you wish to speak on this item?
Um, no, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Shaw, do you wish to speak on this item?
No, thank you.
Councillor McIntyre, do you wish to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill, do you wish to speak on this item?
No, thank you.
Councillor Gilligan, do you wish to speak on this item? Councillor Barrera?
No, thank you.
Councillor Mufford?
No, thanks.
And councillor Zakowski?
Oh, no, thank you, Madam Mayor.
I don't wish to speak on this item councillors, unless there is anyone in opposition, I, I put the motion as carried. Thank you councillors. Item six point five point three, Australian Local Government Association, two thousand and twenty one, the National General Assembly Delegates Report, the report is on pages sixteen to twenty, recommendation is on page sixteen, there are nil attachments. Councillors, do I have a mover?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move, move this motion.
A seconder?
I'll second it.
Councillor Barrera, councillor Zakowski, would you like to speak on this item?
Uh, yes, please, I'll, I'll keep my remarks brief, uh, as it's difficult doing these meetings online. Um, I was fortunate enough to be one of the three councillors that participated in the Australian Local Government Association Conference in Canberra this year, uh, I, which is commonly referred to as ALGA. Um, attendance at the ALGA offers a range of benefits, including the ability to represent council in debate on a range of issues of national importance, uh, direct access to ministers and key members of parliament and the opportunity to network and share best practice and academics with other academics, experts and representatives from council across the country. Attendance allows up to date information and policy direction to be received, uh, discussion and returned to council to be assist, assist, sorry, discuss, discuss and return to council to assist with ongoing planning and implementation of its activities and it's recommended attendance, and it's recommended attendance is continued in the future. Um, my experience at ALGA was a positive one and I look forward to participating in, in future years and I commend this, this report to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Zakowski. Councillor Barrera, would you like to speak on this item?
Uh, yes, please, Madam Mayor, um, I also attended, um, the National General Assembly this year for two thousand and twenty one. I attended virtually and I note that the theme of the assembly was working together for our communities. Um, and it focused on the importance of local government to influence and to affect change across communities. Working together for our communities, simple words, but words endowed with enormous meaning and significant intent. Intent to affect change and change for the better, change that supports our communities and improves people's lives. The key notes, the presentations, all focused on big picture items. Whether it was Wyndham's motion for place based employment programmes or motions focused on resilience and recovery in the wake of pandemic, supports including financial supports for those doing it tough, advocacy for climate change, the future of migration and population and campaigns to fight ageism and to fight racism. Issues and challenges, complex problems that challenged us to think about what the solutions might be and that reinforced the fact that when we come together and work collaboratively, we can make an enormous difference for our community. The three days were a fantastic opportunity to focus on big picture priorities for communities, to listen to experts, to reflect on what we were all elected for, a timely reminder to work together for the benefit of community, for local community and the enormous privilege that this entails, thank you.
Thank you councillor Barrera, councillor Gilligan, would you like to speak on this item? Councillor Mufford?
No, thank you.
Councillor Maynard?
I'm not, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Marcus?
I'm not, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Shaw?
No, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor McIntyre?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Ramesh?
Um, no, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillors, I'll now, um, put the motion to a vote, councillor Zakowski?
I'm for the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Barrera?
For, thank you.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
Councillor Maynard?
For.
Councillor Marcus?
For.
Councillor Shaw?
Against.
Councillor Hill?
For, thank you.
Councillor McIntyre?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Ramesh?
For.
And I'm for the motion and the motion is carried. Item six point five point four, Lead West Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes, the report is on page twenty one with the recommendation also on page twenty one, the attachments are on pages twenty two to thirty one. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Maynard, seconded by? Councillor Ramesh. Councillor Maynard, as the mover, would you like to speak on this item?
I'd just suffice to say, Madam Mayor, that, um, just housekeeping, so that, given it's an advisory committee at the moment, councillors can, uh, pass and approve the meeting minutes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Maynard, councillor Ramesh, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you.
Councillor McIntyre, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill?
No, thank you.
Councillor Shaw?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Marcus?
No, thank you.
Councillor Zakowski?
Ah, no, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Mufford?
No, thank you.
Councillor Gilligan?
No, thanks.
Councillor Barrera?
No, thank you.
Councillors, unless there's a motion, uh, any, uh, anyone against this motion, I'm deemed the, uh, the item carried.
Um, no, I'm against this motion.
Against it, no worries councillor Shaw is against, I'll go around the room, uh, councillor Barrera?
For.
Thank you councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
Councillor Zakowski?
Uh, for the motion, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Maynard? Councillor Marcus?
For.
Councillor Shaw?
Against.
Councillor Hill?
For, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor McIntyre?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Ramesh?
For.
Thank you councillors, the item has been carried. Item six point five point five, proposed establishment of a joint delegated committee known as Lead West Committee. The report is on pages thirty two to thirty six, the recommendation is on page thirty three and the attachments are on pages thirty seven to fifty. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Zakowski?
Uh, thank you, Madam. I've moved motion with the following amendment, if you bear with me, it's difficult changing screens. Uh, so part seven will read appoint councillor Peter Maynard as the councillor delegate and councillor Susan McIntyre as the proxy for council.
Thank you councillor Zakowski, councillors, do I have a second to, to this motion? Councillor Hill? Councillor Zakowski, as the mover, would you like to speak on this item?
Uh, no, no, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Hill, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor McIntyre, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Ramesh, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you.
Councillor Shaw, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Marcus, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, I would because I'm not voting for the Lead West Committee, uh, Joint Delegated Committee known as the Lead West Committee. Uh, ever since I've been on council and this was formed in two thousand and seven, although they're slightly changing it, Moonee Valley have decided not to join. I think we belong to too many committees, costing us a lot of money and I've never yet seen, every time I've been to Canberra, I've never seen anything good happen, so I will be voting against it.
Thank you councillor Marcus, councillor Maynard, would you like to speak on this item?
I do, Madam Mayor, it's, um, um, subject, or it's a big, the, the changes come because of the fact that uh, the, uh, challenge to the Local Government Act two thousand and twenty, uh, and it does, so Lead West has transitioned from a section eighty six committee to now to a section sixty four, um, delegated committee, but needs the approval of the, uh, member councils, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Mufford, would you like to speak on this item?
So, no, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Gilligan, would you like to speak on this item?
Uh, yes, thanks, Madam Mayor, I also am opposed to this, um, not in the context of the people that have been appointed. I think it's pretty well known, there's a majority controlling faction, uh, in this council who determines who's appointed, so it doesn't really matter.
Councillor Gilligan, that comment is inappropriate, please, so can we please continue?
A broader, um, committee, I do, uh, echo the concerns of councillor Marcus. I do think it is important that we continue to evaluate, um, the effectiveness of committees that we are representative of. Uh, it is concerning that Moonee Valley has withdrawn, um, and therefore it does speak to the importance of uh, further understanding why it is that Lead West is, is, um, requirement, if you will, of rate payers to continue to fund this and the benefits, uh, that ultimately come from this committee. So that is the reason why I am opposed to this, um, and I just thought I'd put that on the record before I vote on the matter. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Gilligan, councillor Barrera? Would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you.
Thank you councillor Zakowski, as has been speakers against this motion and as the mover, would you like to speak on the motion before we put the motion to a vote?
Uh, no, no, thank you, Madam Mayor, that's okay.
Thank you, I now put the motion to the vote, councillor Azakowski as the mover, you can?
I'm, I'm for the motion, Madam Mayor.
Motion, thank you. Um, councillor Hill?
Um, for the motion, can I call a division, thank you.
Thank you, when we get to it, we'll, um, do that, uh, rather than going around the room again, we'll, we'll treat it as a division as we go around the room, so, um, please make your vote heard and noted. So councillor Hill, thank you, uh, councillor McIntyre?
I don't think you could, I don't think you could do that, Madam Mayor, I think you've got to get everyone to vote before you call a division.
Yes, you do, exactly.
Thank you councillors.
I provide a show, so, you know.
Thank you councillors. Councillor McIntyre?
Voting for the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Ramesh?
For.
Thank you councillor Barrera?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
Uh, against.
Thank you councillor Mufford?
For.
Councillor? Marcus?
Against.
Councillor Maynard?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Shaw?
Against.
Councillor Ramesh?
Um, I, you called me out previously about for, I'll just sorry about that.
Uh, all councillors have voted, I'll now go back again, councillors and I'll, and I'll ask the question again in regards to a division that was, uh, council has requested. Count, and so we'll be documenting the following councillor Zakowski, for a division, are you for or against?
I'm, I'm for the motion, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Mufford, for or against?
I'm for, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Barrera, for or against?
For.
Councillor Gilligan, for or against?
Uh, against.
Councillor Ramesh, for or against?
For.
Councillor Hill, for or against?
For.
Councillor McIntyre, for or against?
For, Madam Mayor.
I forgot myself before, but I was for the motion, so I'll, I'll note that down again, it's been for the motion. Councillor Shaw, for or against?
Against.
Thank you councillor Hill, uh, sorry councillor Maynard, apologies. For or against? And councillor Marcus, for or against?
Against.
As we have a majority of councillors for the motion, the motion is carried. Item seven councillors is seven point one, notice of motion six hundred and ten, Australia Post in Tarnit West. The report is on pages fifty five to fifty six, the motion is on page fifty six and there are nil attachments. Councillor Gilligan, as the mover of the notice of motion, um, would you like to, um, move it and speak to it, yeah?
It's first.
Motion is.
I first wish to clarify why we're not dealing with the previous item, item six point five point six, the councillor's report. I'd, I'd encourage you to look at that, then I'm happy to do the motion, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, it wasn't in my, uh, it wasn't in my notes, so, um, we'll come. Thank you, it wasn't in my notes, so we'll go to item six point five point six, the report is on pages fifty one. With the, um, uh, so the. with the, um, uh, so the recommendations on page fifty-one, the report's on pages, uh, fifty-one through to the end of the agenda, probably page fifty-nine, no, fifty-four. Uh, councillors, do I have a mover for item six point five point six, which is the councillor expense report for the first of January to the thirty-first of March twenty twenty-one?
I'll move it, given I pointed it out. Thanks.
Take the example, Gilligan. Uh, do I have a second, uh? Council Mufford? Council Gilligan, as the mover, would you like to speak to the item? No worries. Council Mufford, would you like to speak to the item?
Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Council Zakowski, would you like to speak on the item?
Uh, no, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Council Barrera, would you like to speak on the item?
Negative.
Thank you. Council, um, Marcus, would you like to speak on the item?
No, I think I voiced my opinion earlier in the night.
Thank you, Council Marcus. Council Maynard?
Uh, no, Madam Mayor.
Council Shaw?
No, Madam Mayor.
Council Ramesh?
No, thank you.
Council Hill?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Council McIntyre?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, now I put the motion to a vote. Council Gilligan?
In favour, thanks.
Council Mufford?
Yes, four.
Council Zakowski?
Uh, for the motion, thank you.
Council Barrera?
Four.
Council Marcus?
Four.
Council Maynard?
Uh, four.
Council Shaw?
Four.
Council Ramesh?
Four.
Council Hill?
Four.
And Councilor, uh, McIntyre?
Four, Madam Mayor.
And I'm for the motion. As a result, the motion is carried. Thank you, councillors. We're now up to item seven, Council Gilligan. So, item seven point one, I've already read out, is a notice of motion six hundred and ten for Australia Post office in Tarnit West. Councilor Gilligan, you are the mover of the motion. Um, would you like to read the motion?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh, I am intending to read the motion as amended. The case is as follows. One, that council writes to the managing director at Australia Post to request that they investigate establishing a post office in Tarnit West, as well as review the postal service offerings at Truganena and Williams Landing, Manalakes, Windham Vale and Warraby South. Two, that council also writes to the federal member for Walla, Joanne Ryan, MP, and the federal member for Jellybrand, Tim Watts, to seek their supporting in engaging Australia Post on the items, uh, sorry, on the issues outlined in point one. And three, that both pieces of correspondence be sent to both parties by no later than four August twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Council Gilligan. Is there a, um, second to this motion? Council Shaw? Council Gilligan, as the mover of the motion, would you like to speak on this item?
Madam Mayor, uh, only to say that, uh, this revised resolution incorporates feedback that has been provided by councillors, uh, and, uh, with that, I'm happy for it to be now put immediately to a vote as amended. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Gilligan. You are called to have the item put immediately to a vote. Do you have a second to do that? Council Shaw, councillors, I now move that we put the item to a vote. I need, I need a vote on that. So, Council Gilligan, um...
Madam Mayor, you should, Madam Mayor, you should have asked if somebody else wanted to debate the issue, as was explained to us by a council...
Council Marcus? Council Gilligan has asked to put the item straight to a vote, and as a result of that, the question before the current council is whether or not they wish to continue the debate or not and/or put the motion to a vote. As a result, the question I now have from councillors...
Madam, Madam Mayor, point of order, um, the mover of the motion, uh, procedural motion on the motion...
One moment, please. You're probably right. That's, you are right, Council Zakowski. So, Council Gilligan, unfortunately, I can't accept your, um, your proposal to put it forward, so I now, um, ask if there's anyone else that wishes to speak on this item. Councilor Shaw is the second of this item. Would you like to, um, speak on this item?
Oh, thanks, Madam Mayor. Only just so, I think the, um, based on the feedback that was received, it's good to see that the motion, notice of motion has been amended accordingly. I'll be supporting it, as I'm sure no doubt others will be as well. Um, this has been discussed, uh, uh, in, uh, um, in our briefings, um, and with, uh, other councillors, so I certainly know that it's something that, uh, people in the community are looking for, as in other areas. So, thank you, Council Gilligan, for taking on the feedback from other councillors, amending your notice of motion. I'll be supporting that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Shaw. Council Marcus, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, thank you. I, uh, acknowledge the fact that, um, Council Gilligan put this motion forward, and I acknowledge the fact that Councilor Hill has asked for some alterations, which I think is really good. This has been one of the biggest bugbears for many members of our community, that they do want post offices in their area. So, well done both to Josh and to Jasmine, putting this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Marcus. Council Maynard, would you like to speak on this item?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I echo the comments of, uh, the other councillors in commending Council Gilligan for putting this, uh, motion forward and, and making those alterations, uh, as have been discussed. Uh, certainly, since, um, uh, Manalakes, uh, was given the community post office, I think there's, uh, it's timely for review, uh, so, and also Warraby South to see if, uh, there's anything for so, uh, my congratulations for that motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor... What have I got next? Sorry, Council Barrera?
No, no, thank you.
Council Mufford?
No, thank you.
Council Zakowski?
Uh, yes, I'll, I'll speak briefly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I too believe this is, this is actually a really good motion to bring to the chamber. Um, I understand that really the resolution happens at a federal level, but nonetheless, uh, it's, it's certainly been an issue that I've found quite perplexing over a number of years, just even just as a resident. Um, the lack of postal, uh, services, post boxes, um, the decline of the postal service in general in the area, um, or the lack of, uh, keeping up, keeping pace with growth, um, has, has concerned me for a really long time. Um, and I commend Council Gilligan, um, bringing this to the chamber, uh, and also for accepting the amendments, um, as, as suggested. So, uh, I do, I do hope that the, the motion brings about a, a positive change for our whole municipality. Um, and I, I hope that the correspondence is received well and acted upon.
Council McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry about that. Um, I too, um, are pleased that the, um, equality of access across our municipality is now, um, reflected in this. It's an important issue, um, that Council Gilligan did bring forward, and the fact that, um, he's taken on board the feedback, I think is great. It's important not to just focus on a small but very well deserving part of municipality, but as a whole, so I will be supporting his notice of motion. And thank you very much for all, all the feedback concerning taking it on board.
Council Hill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, thank you, Council Gilligan, for taking on board some of the suggestions. And I just want to check with you, Madam Mayor, the, um, the, because we don't have a written, um, changed amendment by Council Gilligan. I just want to, uh, check the suburbs, uh, actually, that he mentioned is actually, um, correct. Would that be possible to check?
Given the fact that, uh, the meeting is as it is tonight, Council Gilligan, can you just read the, um, suburbs that you put in there?
Were, uh, Truganena, Williams Landing, Manalakes, Windham Vale and Warraby South. They were all of the suburbs that you have mentioned, Council Hill. They are incorporated in here.
Thank you. There is missing of one. Um, so altogether, we should have six, eh?
I didn't include Tarnit, Tarnit Wests in there as well.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. Uh, Council Ramesh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will also be supporting this, uh, motion tonight, considering, uh, the remaining corridors of Windham have been included. Um, I hope that this achieves an outcome that's, um, ideal for Windham.
Thank you, Council Ramesh. Councillors, now I put the motion to a vote. Council Gilligan? Council Gilligan, sorry, I missed that. Blip reading.
Oh, four, thanks.
Okay. Council Shaw?
Four, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Marcus. Councillors, we seem to have lost Council Marcus.
She's left the meeting.
Acting CEO, can we, can I get confirmation that Council Marcus has left the meeting?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council Maynard?
Uh, for, Madam Mayor.
Council Barrera?
In favour.
Council Mufford?
Yes, four.
Council Ramesh? Oh, sorry, Council Zakowski?
Uh, for the motion, thank you.
Council McIntyre? Sorry, you're on mute.
For the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council Hill?
Four, thank you, Madam Mayor.
And Council Ramesh? Sorry, Council Ramesh, you're on mute.
Sorry, just somebody muted me. Um, so, four. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm for the motion. The motion has been carried. Item seven point two, notice of motion six hundred and eleven, the body corporate strategic plan review. The report is on pages fifty-seven to fifty-nine. The motion is on page fifty-nine. There are nil attachments. Council McIntyre, I believe you've got a conflict on this item?
I haven't. I, I will leave. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Council Gilligan, you are the mover of the, oh, so you're the person who's proposed the notice of motion, so I'll go over to you to read the notice of motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The motion is as follows. That a strategic review unto the extent of powers of council providing planning approvals of estates involving common property be provided to council by the December two thousand and twenty-one ordinary council meeting. The scope of this review should include, but not limited to, powers around planning controls on existing and future common property sites, the role of section one seven three agreements in the event of a dissolution of an owners' corporation agreement via VCAT, and the council position on common property where a dissolution of an owners' corporation involving common property in Windham occurs. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, do I have a second for that motion? Council Shaw? Council Gilligan, as the mover of the motion, would you like to speak on the item?
I would thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Uh, in essence, the, um, the section explaining this resolution talks to, uh, the disaster that was the Ecoville site in Tarnit. A body corporate model, um, whereby it contained common property owned by the estate that ultimately became, ran down and neglected, that ultimately led to a major public story across the state involving antisocial behaviour, and then subsequently led to the dissolution of that body corporate and the sale off of a community centre and basketball courts to now be comprised of dozens of townhouses. This is the reality of the problem that we see across the city, where approvals have occurred of, of estates involving common property that can easily be sold at a later date, flogged off for housing, not in the direct interests of the community in which it was originally created, more broadly the suburb in which the common property resides, and the bailout component that is required of a council to either consider whether it ultimately purchases or acquires a site versus letting it go for residential housing. The reality is that Ecoville will not be the last instance of this, and it is quite frankly a situation where we will see the continuation of failure of these models as more and more estates finalise, and ultimately, uh, people within those estates determine they no longer wish to pay an annual levy as part of a body corporate model, and want to ultimately dissolve the site that they, that they live in. So it's a question about situations like sanctuary lakes, uh, salt water. Uh, there are multiple OCs, uh, in the suburb of Tarnit, and the importance of protecting the community in terms of assets that may reside on common property being demolished and ultimately seeing housing. Swimming pools, community centres, basketball tennis courts reside on common property right across the city, and there's been a lack of foresight and regulation, in my opinion, both in the context of local government but also the state, about how we make sure that these body corporates don't end up being body calamities. And that's really what we're looking at in terms of not just Ecoville, but a number of, uh, upcoming, uh, potential sites that ultimately require the council to determine whether or not it wishes to play a role or not. It is important that council takes a position on this, and the fact that it hasn't is, in my opinion, an a- absolute failure of policy intervention in not putting in place risk mitigation before these things happen. Ecoville is a great example, and I keep referring to it because it's the most memorable one for, you know, most people in the city of Windham, and as I've mentioned, it won't be the last. The importance of us having policy controls around whether we do or don't acquire, and in what circumstances that we do, is precisely why this strategic review is important. If it were the case that this could be done internally, then why hasn't it been done yet? And I think that is why it is important that that strategic review be indicated strongly as a priority of this council. And that may involve external, uh, review in terms of, um, various evidence points in order to assist to get this outcome. It talks to the section one seven three agreements, the agreements by which developers must abide by in these estates, looking at ways, in the same we've done in Elements Estate, where we saw a side of a non-government school land being turned into housing at a VCAT level, potentially, uh, and us saying that we simply don't accept that is the best use of land. Well, here is another example of pure market failure, where a estate can go and sell the gimmicks or the swimming pool, the community centre and various types of community supports. Then a community can decide they no longer wish to pay the annual fee within it, and then a council is asked whether or not it wishes to either bail out or allow those assets to be demolished in favour of more housing. And I think our community has been overwhelmingly clear, we don't want to see more and more residential housing, particularly on sites that currently have community assets. It makes sense, but yet it is not the reality of the framework in which we work here within a planning scheme context, but also uh, in, in a governmental context. So that is why this review is important. That is why this is a good spend of money. That is why this review must happen, to avoid the mistakes of the past and to avoid the consequences of the future if we do not act and act now. Thanks very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Gilligan. Councilor Shaw, would you like to speak on this item?
Um, not yet, no, so...
You're right.
Yes, thank you.
No worries. Uh, Council Maynard, would you like to speak on this item?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Madam Mayor, I won't be supporting this, uh, motion, uh, because of the fact that, uh, it's not, I believe, an area that council should be playing in. If developers want to, uh, develop, uh, common property, uh, then I think that the discussion should be had at a higher level about what developers should and should not be allowed to put into their estates, and how long they actually should, uh, be responsible for those estates. There are estate, there are, um, owners' corporations that do work, there are owner corporations that don't work. Uh, Ecoville was, uh, as councillor, um, uh, Gilligan had mentioned, uh, was one that didn't work. Uh, council, uh, did try and intervene and, uh, was initially, uh, you know, successful in having, uh, youth services and those sorts of things down there. We were then asked if we wanted to purchase the, uh, the whole property, and we did not, and I do believe we should not. Um, we have a, uh, strategy that, uh, a sports strategy that outlines where we should be putting our facilities, and, uh, I think, Madam Mayor, that the fact that we don't know what's actually being put in these things uh, is a warning signal, uh, in its own right. I think that, uh, it should be a discussion that's had, uh, at, at a higher level than council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank, thank you councillor Maynard. Councillor Hill, would you like to speak on this item?
Um, thank you, madam mayor. Um, I am also not supportive of this motion tonight. Um, this is not um, something within, within council direct so-called control, it's within our circle influence. So developers, um, well, of these, um, they, they can use the communal facilities such as um, as a marketing exercise, they set up um, this body corporate and then when it's finished, they walk away. And, well, however, I don't think um, this is a single council issues anywhere, um, a single, single council anywhere in Victoria, they can't, we can solve this problem, is the legislation, consumer affairs and a relevant state government ministers. Um, for example, minister of planning. This is a problem of council throughout Victoria. Perhaps, I think, our MAB can bring this to the attention of the state level. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Hill. Councillor Ramesh?
Um, thank you, madam mayor. I will also not be supporting this motion tonight. Um, I agree with statements made by councillor Maynard. Um, owners' corporations, as much as they impact on multiple citizens of Wyndham, they are a private contractual matter. So I do not think that the, I think it's totally inappropriate for the council um, to be interfering in, in the managing of any of uh, the assets that are controlled by the um, OCs. So, yeah, so I will not be supporting this notice of motion.
Thank you councillor Ramesh. Councillor Barrera?
Uh, thanks, madam mayor. Um, I'll be supporting um, this tonight. Um, I think it's worth uh, getting a broad report that gives us uh, an overview of, of the, the potential levers um, that we might have at our disposal when it comes to planning um, and the extent of, of powers that council might have or by the same token, might not have. That's why I think a broad, high-level report is worth doing. I think it has merit so that we can explore the extent of our powers and get some better information on where as a council we stand with this. So I will be supporting it.
Councillor McFoud?
Thank you, madam mayor. Uh, I too will be supporting this motion. I was um, unsure at times, a bit conflicted with the price tag especially, but um, I take on board the comments other councillors have made in regards to, you know, how much we can influence this area, but when it comes to planning, I think my view is we should be able to influence what happens and what goes on in our city and we should be, have more of a say in planning issues. So as I said, I was a bit unsure about the price tag attached to having a report like this conducted, but, you know, we need the outcome, we need to know where we stand on this matter and what we, you know, what exact influence we can have in regards to owners' corporations in our area and future developments. So, thank you, madam mayor. That's all from me.
Thank you councillor Zakowski?
Uh, thank you, madam mayor. Yes, I'll, I'll say a few brief words. So, just to echo the sentiments of Jasmine, um, I, I wanna, I wanna say at the, at the outset that uh, I, I do agree that the um, failure of body corporates within estates um, is, is a, a potential um, significant risk for, for members of our community. Um, the, the, what, what I don't agree with is that um, resolving this um, through council pro- processes is apparently possible. Um, in doing my due diligence and considering this matter, um, I've, I've come to terms with the fact that um, to, to effect a, a change um, that would result in us being able to uh, do anything about these matters going forward, we would have to change state, federal, um, civil corporation law, um, the number of changes that we required um, for us to be effective in, in making decisions around whether or not body corporates can and can't be included and, and under what terms. Uh, I, I'm not convinced that it's uh, that a review is going to reveal that we have any ability with our current powers. Um, and ultimately it's going to open up a big black hole um, in, in advocacy campaign to try and bring about those changes. Um, when, when in actual fact, this probably, as, as Jasmine said, probably be better dealt with by the peak body. Um, I'm not sure why Wyndham um, needs to be the one to, to resolve all these problems. Um, especially if, and we. Um, especially if this is a, a broader problem for other growth suburbs, um, or whether this is a broader issue for the state. So not, not knowing that information or, or kind of really being aware that, that we don't know, it's more about the unknown unknowns as well. Um, I, I just can't see why we would open up that black hole, that financial black hole. Um, knowing, knowing where we currently stand and knowing just how big uh, a task it would be to, to um, make changes that are required. Um, I think that the report's going to come back and ultimately it's going to be a dead end. Um, and I think that money could be put to better use. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Zakowski. Councillor Shaw, you had.
Yes, thank you.
Would you like to speak?
I did, thank you. I just wanted a moment to think about the work, what councillor Gilligan had spoken about and so I appreciate that coming to me first threw me off guard, uh, madam mayor, but um, it's been interesting listening to this and councillor Gilligan has a right of reply, so I'm sure he's got a, a number of things that uh, he'll, he'll raise on this. But I think we're missing the point here. This is about common property that becomes a council problem. Uh, and this is where, coming back to um, body corporates, owner corporations, whatever you want to call them, the issues that we've seen uh, certainly last term at council is that it becomes a problem of council to fix and uh, and this is about planning. This is about ensuring, I, I agree with what some other councillors have spoken about here. This is about planning controls. This is about understanding uh, what planning controls we can and cannot put in place. Uh, pretty hard to understand that if we actually don't do a review like this to do that. Similarly, we're doing that with a library review which funny enough didn't get a fifty thousand dollar price tag on it, but, you know, that, that's for another day. But this is certainly about uh, understanding what those controls are and what levers we can and can't pull um, for people in our community. And if you've listened to the annual community survey reports, discussions we've had, um, not just this term at council but last term, planning is the number one issue, one of the number one issues at this council for our residents. And yet here we are trying to actually strengthen our planning controls or understand what they might be and we're getting caught up in, should we be claiming this way to body corporates or not? That's not, the review is trying to understand what controls and planning controls we can put in place around common property and what would happen and have a council position if one of these did fail and we did have to take on a number of these assets. We already know we're taking on millions and millions of dollars of developer assets for what they actually do. So I think this is a good notice of motion. I think it's good to understand what those planning controls are, what levers we have uh, when this issue does arise. I hope it actually doesn't, but if it does, we'll have a better understanding of that. I know some others talked about higher levels. I'm not really quite sure what higher levels we're talking about here. Uh, for example, uh, last term, consumer affairs, when we went to them about residents coming to us in terms of how market, how estates were being marketed and when they bought into those estates, those facilities and some of the things that were being promised by those developers weren't actually being fulfilled and those people were getting very disappointed. We took that to consumer affairs, I can tell you where it went, nowhere. So I think this is a great way for us to actually understand our position and our way forward. And I actually hope this gets over the line, uh, because it's actually really important from a planning perspective. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Shaw. Councillor Gilligan, as they have been speakers against this motion and as you are the mover, you get a right of reply?
Very much, madam mayor. Well, I think councillor Shaw did most of the uh, the work there, I think in terms of the argument here. Uh, and it is so important to actually narrow this down, as is the actual resolution itself. This talks about what is absolutely within councils remit. Uh, and it also talks about what perhaps isn't, uh, which is precisely what's so important to help explain to our community, because I don't know uh, what is and what is not within the purview of town planning around the approvals of these um, models in newer estates. And so when they collapse, uh, and in many instances, it's not if, it's when, we've got a position as elected representatives that we can go back to our wards and say, this is our position. Right now, we don't have one. It's not informed by any evidence base, which is what this resolution does. It helps us with that evidence base. There are councillors that say, we don't just come with the problem, we come with the solution. Well, I'm trying to get the solution here with the problem. That's why I would encourage councillors to vote for it and you know, the, the irony there would be that we're identifying a problem but we don't want to vote or solve it. Uh, and we're saying it's all just a bit too hard. Uh, we didn't say it was all a bit too hard when the state had full regulation of what we call sunset clauses. And I had dozens of families from migrant backgrounds who had purchased in estates that came and said, you know, as a ward councillor, can you do something about this? It's absolutely not necessarily the purview of local government. But the Labor Government, the Victorian Labor Government, committed to change the, uh, the laws, uh, took it to an election and that was a direct result of a campaign that was ran here at Wyndham City via Fairfax and Domain uh, in highlighting the, this issue from a planning context. There are planning controls, state legislation, we witnessed the problem, we said this has got to change, we fought for it and we got the solution. There are vulnerable parts of our community that would be bitterly disappointed if this council says it's all just a bit too hard, it's got nothing to do with us. And then if you're someone who lives in a state, you go, well, hang on, who's responsible for planning decisions? Oh, hang on, councils are, aren't they? I mean, councils make the decisions on permits and applications, do they not? And so therefore, how could you not logically draw the two together? And then finally, when it comes to uh, a situation where we're making planning permit approvals for townhouses demolishing community centres, again, that's our position, we are approving that, we're the tier of government responsible for those approvals. So what this review will do is determine the extent to which we can control this from a planning control point of view. It says we will have a policy position about if this does happen, what is our position, so we can inform our community. In the absence of that, in the absence of that work, in the absence of doing anything about this, we're simply throwing our hands up and saying, we're going to fail our communities that all of a sudden have body corporate models that fall apart. And I don't think, I didn't run for, you know, become a local councillor and say, it's all just a bit too hard, I'm not going to represent my community because perhaps there are other higher levels of authority that could deal with this. I ran in twenty sixteen because I wanted to help my community in every way I could. This is a perfect example of how we can help our community by being better informed, advocating for the areas that need review and protecting and preserving the community assets that our community so desperately need in parts of our city, which fall under this inferior model, in my opinion. So I would encourage people to vote for this. It is a review. It is to get that empirical evidence, the understanding of what we can and can't do. Let's not just say we've got a problem.
Councillor Gilligan, can you sum up?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gilligan, um, I now put, I councillors, I now put the motion to a vote. Councillor Gilligan?
Uh, four, thanks.
Councillor Shaw?
Four.
Councillor Maynard?
Against.
Councillor Hill?
Against.
Councillor Ramesh?
Against.
Councillor Barrera?
Four.
Councillor McFoud?
Four.
Councillor Zakowski?
Against the mo- motion, madam mayor.
And I'm for the motion. The motion is therefore carried. Thank you councillors. Item eight, council seal, there are no reports. Item nine, which? Item nine, questions with notice from the public gallery. Madam acting CEO, are there any public questions this evening?
Yes, madam mayor, there's a question from a resident, uh, Daryl Studdington, uh, two questions in relation to dedicated facilities um, for children in Wyndham with learning disabilities. Um, so I'll read the first question. Has Wyndham City Council advocated to the state government for funding to build a dedicated and purpose-built school or education centre in Wyndham for children with learning and social disabilities, including ADHD and autism? And if not, um, why not? Um, obviously councillors would be aware that the Victorian um, government is responsible for planning and providing government schools, including um, special um, schools. Um, as part, part of council's advocacy strategy, we've been asking the state government uh, to make sure that families in Wyndham have access to the, the types of schools that meet community needs. And this includes particularly addressing the diverse learning needs um, of all members of our community. Um, as our city grows, our students with a disability um, need to be provided with access to specific places at schools that are designed to meet um, their needs. The second question, uh, madam mayor and councillors, um, relates to um, assuming that um, your response will be that it's a state government responsibility or that you have made representation. Can you please provide confirmation or evidence that the council has advocated for dedicated purpose-built schools in Wyndham um, for children with learning and social disabilities such as ADHD and autism? I can advise, madam mayor and councillors, that the council, um, as you know, meets regularly with the Department of Education to discuss planning for new schools in Wyndham. Uh, council provides information on demographics, growth and development needs um, of Wyndham, including very robust research data around our school needs. Um, the coun- council officers um, met with the Department of um, Education as late as um, this month in fact, um, and at that meeting, um, we had a discussion with the department around the specialist um, um, school provision in Wyndham as well as the planning for mainstream schools. Uh, the council continues to advocate to government on this important issue and we look forward to seeing the outcomes of that advocacy through um, further school announcements via the state budget next year. Thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you, madam acting CEO. Item eighteen on the agenda is urgent business and there is nil. Item eleven is confidential business. I understand that the confidential item has been with John, madam acting CEO.
That's correct, madam mayor.
Councillors, therefore we do not need to move into confidential. Councillors? I therefore believe that we can declare the meeting closed at eight oh three. Thank you councillors for a wonderful evening.
Thank you, madam mayor. Thank you councillors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.